And we're live.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the November 2020 meeting of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill Board of Trustees Meeting. I'm Richard Stevens, current Chair of the Board. It's great to be together again with the Board members and a few of the people from the administration. Those of you watching this remotely on Zoom or otherwise remotely, thank you for joining us. Let's just start with a few logistics about the meeting process. Board members and others participating in the room, your microphones are on the table in front of you. Please be sure to use your microphone when you're speaking. For those on Zoom, if you would, please mute your microphone until you speak. And when you begin speaking or make a motion, please identify yourself. Under recently enacted amendments to the North Carolina General Statutes concerning virtual meetings by public bodies, all votes will be by roll call. In addition, all chats, instant messages, texts, or other written communications between members of the Board regarding the transaction of the public business during this remote meeting are deemed to be a public record. And now call on Secretary Teresa Artis Neal to call the roll.
Ms. Artis Neal, present. Mr. Bullock?
Present.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Kobe?
Present.
Mr. Cochran?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Duckett?
Here.
Mrs. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. McCullen?
Here.
Mr. Meekins?
Present.
Mr. Mosley?
Present.
Mr. Pryor?
Mr. Stevens?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Governor Stevens. As Chair of the Board Trustees, it's our responsibility to remind all members of the Board of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflicts of interest as required by this Act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees meeting. If any Board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with respect to any matter coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict or appearance of conflict should be identified at this time. I recognize Trustee Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have a conflict of interest for item number three within the Finance Infrastructure Audit Committee Construction Manager at Risk Selection.
I'd like to state to the record, I have the same similar conflict, and therefore, Trustees Brown and I will abstain from discussing and voting on that matter when it comes from that committee. Having already read the materials listed under the consent, oh, there are any others, first of all, any others. Having already read the materials listed under the consent agenda, is there any item that needs to be moved to the discussion portion of either the open or the closed session agenda? And those are the minutes of September 24th and the mail ballot of October 19th. And if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those items.
So move Trustee Davis.
Motion by Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
That's in Trustee Cochran.
Kobe and Cochran, both second. You would call the roll, Governor Stevens.
Ms. Artis Neal, yes. Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kobe?
Yes.
Mr. Cochran?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Duckett?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. McCullen?
Yes.
Mr. Meekins?
Yes.
Mr. Mosley?
Yes.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. I want to start our meeting with an acknowledgement of the challenges, and there are many, that our students and faculty and staff have been faced or facing during this condensed semester. In our 227-year history, this whole university has faced wars, economic recessions, pandemic, and more. But again and again, our community has persevered. This semester is no exception. The daily stress and fatigue are not easy, and our students, faculty, and staff have responded by working hard and accomplishing our important mission every single day. I know I speak for the entire Board when I say that we are so grateful to each member of our community for the sacrifices they've made to further our mission of teaching, research, and public service. Thank you from all members of the Board. We mean that most sincerely. Yesterday, our nation paused to thank our veterans for their service to our country. We also want to take a moment today to thank the thousands of Tar Heels who have served in our armed services. Carolina is home to hundreds of student veterans who served their country before coming to Chapel Hill and to many who served after leaving Carolina. To each of you, we say thank you. We feel a deep debt of gratitude for the sacrifices you and your families have made for our country. We also want to congratulate our women's field hockey team for their list of the 23rd ACC Championship, fourth in a row. If you didn't note this, the tournament quarterfinals marked Coach Karen Shelton's 700th win. Congratulations, Coach. Women's tennis Alexa Graham won the ITA National Fall Championship. And as always, great news in Chapel Hill, we beat Duke last weekend in football. It's so exciting to watch our incredible athletes compete. October, we celebrated Kevin Guskowicz's installation as our 12th chancellor. It was a wonderful celebration despite the unusual circumstances. And I want to thank everyone who made that moment in our university's history possible. Chancellor, we're grateful to you and your leadership and for your continued efforts during these difficult times. We appreciate your work to listen to students and the faculty and staff, and alumni, and community members, and Board members and others. As a Board, we look forward to the discussion today of what we've learned from the fall, the decisions you're making for the spring semester, and the work that still needs to be done as we respond to this global pandemic. And finally, I want to take a moment to acknowledge this year's Davy Award winners. In 1984, the Board Trustees established the William Richardson Davy Award to honor deserving individuals for their service on behalf of the university and society. This award is the highest honor this Board of Trustees can bestow. The Davy Dinner is always one of the highlights of our year as a Board, yet because of the pandemic, we were not able to gather for that wonderful event this year. However, we will celebrate these incredible Tar Heels when it is safe to do so. In the meantime, however, I want to recognize them now. Dr. Philip Clay, class of 1968, who served as the Chancellor of Massachusetts Institute of Technology from 2001 until 2011. Native of Wilmington, Dr. Clay served on the UNC Chapel Hill Board of Trustees from '07 to 2015, received an honorary degree from this university in 2018. The late Joan Huntley, who received her PhD from Carolina in Public Health in 1970. Dr. Huntley taught and conducted research in the Gillings School of Public Health and was promoted to professor with tenure in 1975. She then served as Division Director of the National Institute on Aging, part of NIH, until retiring to Chapel Hill in 1990. As Trustee Davis knows, she was a great patron of the arts. Third, David E. Purdo Jr., president of Decort Group, a commercial real estate and financing firm. He joined the company in 1968, shortly after graduating from Carolina. He previously served on our Board of Trustees, chaired the Building and Grounds Committee during the period that oversaw the planning of 50 construction projects, and he continues to serve the university in a number of ways. And finally, Steve and Debbie Vetter, who graduated from Carolina in 1978. Steve with a BS in Business Administration, and Debbie a bachelor's degree in Education. Steve is Chief Executive Officer of Ennis Flint and is also the operating partner of Sinner Oak Partners, a private equity firm based in Dallas. Steve and Debbie are the founders and owners of Tar Heel Properties, which builds and owns apartment complexes throughout the Southeast. Through their generous philanthropy, the veterans created the Red, White, and Carolina Blue Challenge to fund scholarships for students of military families. Let's congratulate all of our Davy Award winners. I want to end with a word of thanks to all the staff who helped make this meeting happen. We appreciate their efforts both in person and remotely so that we're meeting in a successful way today. And I want to welcome our liaison from the UNC Board of Governors, Governor David Powers. I don't think, Dave, you've missed a meeting of our Board yet since you've been our liaison, and invite you to bring greetings and any comments you might have for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things I want to highlight. One, I'm really glad you went through with, at least doing a verbal recognition of your Davy Award winners. I think it's important that we keep those kind of things in mind while we can't physically celebrate them like we would like. The Board of Governors recognized our Holeshauser Award winner at our most recent meeting, and I think it's important that we do keep showcasing the excellence that is very evident throughout our system. So I applaud you for that very much. And on your comment on Veterans Day, I wanted to give you a real quick little story that, something that happened to me that I think kind of puts this in context. My father went to college at Lee's McCray in Banner Elk, and I was up there on a little quick vacation to get away from the heat this summer and stumbled upon a veterans memorial on their campus. Lee's McCray had about 270 students at the time he was there, in the very early 40s, and they had the names listed of the people who were alumni of Lee's McCray who fought in all wars, and there were over 450 Lee's McCray alums who fought in World War II. In a school that had barely over 250 students, I was blown away by that. And you think about what that would translate to at UNC Chapel Hill, or NC State, or East Carolina. Think of all the students who have come through our schools over the years who have served their country in that way. It's really daunting to think about how many of our students have answered that call, both while in school or prior to coming to school, or certainly after. So really appreciate you recognizing that, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things that we have going on that I think you'll be interested in at the Board of Governors. Next week, when we meet, the Governance Committee is going to start a periodic, I'm not going to promise at every meeting, but at least several times a year, discussion on free expression on our campuses. As some of you may know, the Governance Committee functions as the Free Expression Committee of the Board of Governors, and we're going to start with three of your own. Dr. Mark McNally, Jennifer Larson, Tim Ryan will be joining us to discuss some research they did about the state of free expression on campus at UNC Chapel Hill, and we hope to use that as kind of a baseline to expand the discussion, include students, to include Board of Trustees members, chancellors, legislators, staff members, people throughout the system, to talk about this, and to talk about our successes in this area, and talk about some things we may need to work on. So I really applaud the three professors from Chapel Hill who are helping us jumpstart this, and really hope as many of you as can will chime into the Zoom or livestream next week when we meet. That'll be nine o'clock on Wednesday morning next week. The other thing I'm involved in that you might find of interest, particularly for the trustees on the call, is tomorrow morning, I'm going to be doing a panel with a couple of professors from Western Carolina University at the Faculty Assembly Meeting on relationships between faculty and Boards of Trustees and Boards of Governors. Sometimes, there doesn't appear to be much of a relationship at all, and one of my regrets in my role is I don't get to spend very much time with faculty or students. So two professors from Western Carolina whom I served on the Search Committee with and got to know on a personal basis, and we became friends. We're pretty different in a lot of ways, but we had some common interests, and we developed a friendship over our time working on the Search Committee. And we're going to talk to faculty members from around the system about reaching out to Board members, and Board members doing the same to faculty, and really trying to form some relationships and better understand each other. Vicky Zabo, one of the professors, we sat side by side for three days of airport interviews, and I imagine if we had a serious political discussion, we wouldn't have found a whole lot that we agreed on. But we sat beside each other and discovered we both loved history. She's a professor of ancient history, and we actually just had a good time talking again to know each other and have maintained a friendship and really have talked to each other several times in the intervening time about different issues around the university there. So I'm hoping we'll be able to at least start a discussion about how we can create better communications between our faculty and you as a Board of Trustees who are much more involved on a local level on the campus, and us as Board of Governors who admittedly have a little bit different view, a little bit broader view, but still no reason why we can't make ourselves available to discuss things with faculty members ourself. So it might be a little scary to some people, but we're going to try to start a discussion that create a little more dialogue between faculty and Board members. Mr. Chairman, that's about all I've got as far as anything formal going on. Things keep moving. As you know, President Hans is doing a great job of kind of keeping things on an even keel and keeping things as quiet as he can publicly while we manage our way through a very difficult time. I applaud you for your efforts at Chapel Hill and all of your colleagues throughout the system, and what you've done. It's been quite an undertaking, and it hasn't been perfect at all steps, but all in all, I think we have an awful lot to be proud of with our university system and our constituent institutions, the way that they've responded to this very unusual crisis that we have faced. So my hat's off to you. Thank you very much for all you do, but particularly all you do in the face of what we're dealing with right now. Be happy if anybody's got any questions or anything you'd like to hear more about that we have going on. Be happy to try to answer.
Thank you, Governor Powers. And again, thank you for your faithfulness in meeting with us, but also your accessibility. You and I talk on a regular basis, and you've always been quick to return my call and vice versa. Well, I think we always talk the same day. We each try, and that's commendable. I appreciate your accessibility and what you're doing for the whole state for your service in the Board of Governors.
Thank you. It is part of my job that I do take seriously. I mean, we are supposed to be advocates for the schools that we're liaisons to. So I do take that part of my job seriously and really enjoy it very much.
Okay, it shows. Any questions, comments for Governor Powers while we have him with us? Well, he's going to be with us a little bit longer, but while we, this segment. See you any day. Thank again for being with us. We appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Now I want to call on our student body president, Reeves Mosley, for his remarks.
Thank you, Chair Stevens. Hello, everyone. It's good to see you again, and I hope you're all still doing well as we wrap up the semester. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to continue to update you all on what the student body and its respective governments have been working on throughout the semester. Despite the challenges and circumstances we've all faced that have changed the way the semester looked at its outlook in August, I'm extremely proud of the work we've accomplished and the progress we've made towards our goals on this campus as a remote body. Thank you to everyone involved in the process, working to ensure the safety, well-being, and educational advancement of the student body and Carolina community as a whole. Firstly, I would like to say how much of an honor it has been to work and serve alongside Dr. Mimi Chapman and Shayna Hill as a co-chair of the Campus and Community Advisory Committee, or CCAQ. Our dialogue and recommendations have provided clarity and hope for a path forward to a safe spring semester in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. Moreover, the civic engagement team was extremely involved throughout the election season to ensure that all students were informed, prepared, and knowledgeable about how to vote. The committee also ran a commit-to-vote campaign to push students to make a pledge to vote in the election and consider their plan for voting. Now that the election is behind us, this team will shift its focus to the Racial Justice Alliance. The Racial Justice Alliance is a program set in place to foster discussion between UNC students and the Chapel Hill community about racial justice issues such as school segregation, gentrification, and gerrymandering. Since our last meeting, the Multicultural Affairs and Diversity Outreach Team held its first implicit bias training of the semester. MADE will also host a panel entitled "Community Dialogue: Current State of America." This discussion will feature faculty and community leaders with backgrounds in civil rights and racial justice. The event will include discussions about current issues in the United States and how we can make a change in Chapel Hill and beyond. This week, the Student Safety and Wellness Team is hosting a virtual town hall on wellness with administrators and staffs from campus health, housing, dining, and the Office of Dean of Students. This will provide students the opportunity to share their experiences at Carolina related to health and wellness in the fall 2020 semester and provide feedback to guide the direction of wellness initiatives in spring 2021. Lastly, we participated in two advocacy days on November 9th and 10th with the North Carolina General Assembly. This event took place in coordination with the Association of Student Governments. They also joined other Triangle Area Schools in meeting with Senator Wiley Nickel, Representative Verla Ensco, and Representative Robert Reeves to discuss financial support for students during COVID-19 and advocate for the ASG Association of Student Governments' president to have a vote on the Board of Governors. I am reassured more than ever by the hard work done by the members of the student government and the progress that we've made so far this year. I look forward to continuing to work with you all moving forward as we work hard to ensure the best experience for the entirety of the Carolina community. Thank you.
Reeves, thank you. I think just about the time your administration began was as the COVID was peaking up. You've had an incredible year despite that. We thank you for all the efforts on behalf of all the students at Chapel Hill. So again, we appreciate what you're doing. Now I'd like to call on the Chancellor for his remarks, and then he's going to lead us into discussion about spring semester. Chancellor?
Great. Thank you, Chair Stevens. I want to also echo your congratulations to our Davy Award winners. I too look forward to celebrating their amazing gifts to this university. These are great Tar Heels who we look forward to celebrating and thanking in person next fall. I also want to take a moment to thank our veterans. I enjoyed participating in yesterday's Veterans Day ceremony here on campus. It was wonderful to be outside with students despite the rain to honor our veterans. We had several of our ROTC members in attendance, ROTC students, several who will be commissioned this coming May. Since we last met, I charged the UNC Sustainability Council with driving Carolina's efforts to reduce its environmental footprint. Building on three zeros, this council will advise me and our leadership team on sustainability across our campus. This week, we received great news about the Chair of the Council, Mike Peeler, who many of you know, along with Carolina Population Center Director Elizabeth Frankenberg, and Institute for Marine Science Director Rick Ludik. They've received a $3.5 million grant from the National Science Foundation to help lead a new project to develop adaptation and migration strategies for future storms and flooding. A lot of their work, as you well know, is around maintaining the coast and the beautiful North Carolina coast. So congratulations to these researchers, and I'll enjoy bringing Mike Peeler to visit with the Board at some point soon. He's going to do a great job for us. I'd be remiss if I didn't at least briefly address the ongoing election of 2020. Like this year, it goes on and on, and we're still waiting for the official results, as you know, but the current numbers are impressive. 5.5 million voters, 75% of our state's registered voters participated in the election. And I want to congratulate the many members of our community for their participation, and for many of our students who voted for the very first time. We look forward to working with our elected leaders and to continue finding new ways to help stimulate our economy, create jobs for North Carolina, and care for the, you know, every county, you know, in North Carolina. It was just last year about this time that we had our Tar Heel Bus Tour, and we saw the many ways in which our faculty and staff and students contribute to North Carolina's economy. And we're going to try to bring that bus tour back again next year. At faculty council meeting on Friday, faculty member Lloyd Kramer, who most of you know, compared that election of 1800 to the 2020 election. He talked about how our nation's been divided throughout its history, but more importantly, highlighted how we as a nation has moved forward despite these challenges. But still, he pointed out that there are glaring inequalities and divisions that remain, and those issues of 1800 are still with us today. As a university, a great global public research university, our role is to study this history and this year's election and learn from it. I'm grateful to the many departments and programs across our campus that are doing this important work, such as the Program for Public Discourse. And they'll be hosting events on November 16th and 17th, asking the question, is dialogue possible in this post-election period? And so I hope you can tune into that Zoom event on the 16th and 17th of November. As many of you are aware, Carolina is defending itself in a multi-year lawsuit challenging our ability to admit and educate a diverse community of outstanding students from varied backgrounds. We've talked about this on several occasions over the past few years, and we are, this case is ongoing this week and likely next week. We're limited on what we can say about the trial, but I think the facts are clear, and I sent a campus message out regarding this last week. Carolina follows the law when we admit each class of outstanding undergraduate students, and I know that every student rightfully has earned their place here at Carolina. So we remain steadfast in our commitment to actively recruiting academically qualified students from all 100 North Carolina counties and beyond, and in doing that, we'll create a vibrant campus community where students from all backgrounds can excel and thrive. As Chair Stevens and others have said today, we know the challenges that many of our community members have faced during this compressed semester. It's hard to believe that we're within just four days of completing that semester. We'll finish classes next Tuesday and begin finals just a few days after that. But the uncertainty and anxiety in our world has added additional stress to the lives of our faculty, staff, and students. And I've heard from students, employees, faculty, who all echo these sentiments, and they are constantly giving, serving, and sacrificing for our community, and the toll that this is taking does not go unnoticed. I want to ask that our Board to join me in thanking our nearly 17,000 faculty and staff who have made this semester possible, and to our students here on campus and around the world, thank you for your dedication. So if you can join me in a round of applause. Now I want to transition and talk about our planning for the spring semester. My leadership team and I have spent the past 246 days working nonstop to address this pandemic. We entered the summer and fall with a lot of uncertainty, with limited experience with the pandemic, and untested playbook to guide our decision-making. Some of our plans have worked, other parts have not, and we know that this has caused frustration and disappointment for many. But we've learned from our experience this fall, from listening to our community, and the experiences of other universities around the country. We're working to ensure a successful start and a finish to the spring 2021 semester, and I'm grateful, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting today, to the work of our Campus and Community Advisory Committee, our faculty content experts, and the roadmap implementation team. And I want to acknowledge and thank Provost Bob Bluen, as he's been leading that roadmap implementation team, meeting multiple times a week, bringing various groups together to help get us to the right place. And so I want to thank Bob for that. Hundreds of hours have gone into this with a lot of people, and so we're grateful, Bob, for your leadership there. As we've shared with campus, we've made several changes surrounding the start of the campus, of the semester for the spring. That start date will be January the 19th. It's about two weeks later than originally scheduled on January the 6th. We will have, you know, campus housing for students, but it'll be reduced from how we started that first semester with approximately 3,500 students in single occupancy. We'll have increased isolation and quarantine space, probably in the neighborhood of four or five times what we had to start that fall semester, and we'll have enforcement of community standards. Well, those community standards will be very similar to how we started the spring, the fall semester. The way in which we'll be enforcing those will be changed to some degree. Two areas of improvement will be testing and off-campus enforcement of those standards, and you're going to hear a little more about that from two of our guests here in a few moments. We know a lot more today about testing than we did back in June, July. We've increased our capacity throughout the semester. I've been proud of the way in which campus health has helped stand up testing alongside many of our campus, public health, and infectious disease experts. We've experimented with different types of testing to help inform our decision-making throughout this semester as we're making decisions for that spring semester.
Vice Chancellor for
Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs, Amy Johnson, and Campus Health Director Ken Pittman, sent an email to students strongly encouraging them to participate in exit testing. You'll be hearing more about this, but exit testing is what we're strongly encouraging our students to do before they leave, to go back to their home communities after this semester is completed. And so we've extended hours for asymptomatic testing the week of November 16th. We will require testing for the spring semester, and we'll hear a little more about that. We're going to require re-entry testing as well. And our enforcement of community standards continues. Student Affairs is working tirelessly to help improve coordination with the Town of Chapel Hill, and you'll hear a little more about that in a minute. So let me introduce our guests. I've invited Dr. Amir Barzan and Chief David Perry to speak with you today on these two issues of testing and community standard enforcement off-campus. Dr. Barzan is an Assistant Professor in the School of Medicine and the Medical Director of the Family Medicine Center at UNC Chapel Hill and the UNC Urgent Care at the Family Medicine Center at Chapel Hill. He's leading our testing at the Respiratory Diagnostic Center and will lead testing for the campus, along with Ian Buchanan from UNC Health. And then Chief David Perry will talk to us about the enforcement, and he's, as you well know, is our Assistant Vice Chancellor and Chief of Police at Carolina. Came to Carolina a year ago after serving as the Assistant Vice President for Safety and Chief of Police at Florida State for 14 years. And he's made an incredible impact on our community and our community policing efforts, and we're grateful for his leadership. So I want to thank Amir and Chief for being with us today, and I think we'll kick it off with Dr. Amir Barzan.
Thank you, Chancellor. I really appreciate it. Board of Trustees, thank you so much for having me, and please let me know if there's anything that you have questions about. What I was going to try to do over the next few minutes is give you an outline of what we have been doing over the past couple months in trying to stand up our testing efforts here at the university. At any time, if you would like me to go into more detail, I'm happy to do so. One of the things that I think was really important that the Chancellor mentioned is that there are, outside of what I'm going to talk to you about, there's been a variety of initiatives that are really based upon the fact of making our campus more secure and then also making sure that the communication, housing, and resources for students are complete as well. I won't touch on those subjects as much, but just know that that's part of the overarching plan for this. I'm going to walk through a little bit about what our initial plan is for testing and walk through the different steps that you may see or hear about along that process. First off, what we're doing is that we do think that regular surveillance testing is important. What we would do when we're doing our surveillance testing is a anterior near swab, basically a short stick that goes to the side of your nose. It's a very fast swab. It's non-invasive. Our goals when we were thinking about starting our testing were that we wanted to make sure that we had not only the ability to test, but also the capacity to return results in a timely fashion with less than 24 hours as well. We looked through and kind of monitored what different testing techniques were available. And at this time, one of the ways that we think is going to give us the best and most definitive results is to use what's called a PCR-based test result. I know that some of you may have heard of antigen testing too, but largely untested in our asymptomatic patient population, so we thought a PCR-based platform was important. So if I'm walking through this process from start to finish, what I'm going to do is guide you from location to the lab and how access is done in terms of testing sites and the information that's given both to students and to our reporting agencies. What we've got planned right now is to have the ability to have multiple testing locations on campus. We're thinking currently of three large testing locations that will be available that can accommodate up to 15 to 18 people being tested at any given time. The amount of time that it takes to do such a test, since it's going to be self-administered and since it's going to be driven basically through a phone-based, web-based application that we're developing that I'll touch on for a little bit, is actually very short. From front to finish, it should take no more than two minutes for someone to come through, register themselves for their own test, administer the test, and then walk out of the testing center. Part of that is this development that I was mentioning of a web-based interface that we're using. We were lucky that at the beginning of the semester, there was already a significant amount of work that was done to develop this web-based platform for students being able to know when to access campus and when to leave a certain buildings on campus when they were going for classes. We're lacing in our interface with that for the ability to be able for students to not only scan for their own tests, that's going to be on a barcode that they would use on their test results, but then also basically be able to receive information about frequency of testing, and then also to have an access banner that talks about whether or not they are in compliance for a regular testing surveillance program. After the process of getting to that point, we started off looking at our campus to see what space was available so that we could open up our own testing lab. Given the quantity of tests that we would need to do, we would have to have a lab that could perform high-throughput testing, but also in an efficient and timely manner. I'm happy to report that we received our CLIA certificate for that lab, which is a big step in terms of being able to have a certified lab that can report results to both state agencies and is considered one of the gold standards of being a diagnostic lab. We received our certificate just a couple days ago. We have at our helm of this project, someone who has been a lab director for 30 years, who has been helping us with this project, and she has been putting in a significant amount of work to make sure that all of our required documents are in play. Leading the lab on a day-to-day basis, we have one of our PCR experts that we have here on campus who has pretty much pivoted her role from working in other areas to this as a dedicated effort to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to keep our campus safe. Our processing for the lab is complete to the point of where we've met with our vendors, and we have gone through initial recommendations that they've had in terms of what the space should be allotted, and by the end of this next week coming up, we'll have receipt of our high-throughput platform that we're using to have our labs processed. By the second week of December, we should be able to have all of our training done and then fully functional lab up at that point. As you can imagine, the lab is only as important as the information that the lab gives. We have been working very hard with our internal IT team and then also external partners to be able to make sure that we have a reporting platform that not only is able to give up results to students that are being tested, but to also be able to report to our state agencies as our obligation for doing these tests. We are working on developing that interface so it's seamless. We've met with both our representatives from the local health department and the state epidemiology office, but also our campus health representatives as well to make sure they have the information they need to help facilitate the move of students. In addition to that, as the Chancellor had alluded to earlier, we've increased the number of isolation and quarantine dorms, but we're also working with both our local and state partners to make sure that we are very clear on the duties that the campus health department is going to maintain in terms of making sure that those who are on campus get moved to the appropriate dorms, but also our off-campus partners being able to have access to the things that they need as well while they're isolating and quarantining. In addition to that, we are working very closely in terms of monitoring numbers and wanting to know that we can make a dynamic design of what we consider a fair surveillance testing protocol. With that, we're working with our partners in epidemiology to be able to model out different projections and different pictures of what it could look like, where we would say we need to scale testing up or scale testing down. I know that was a lot of information condensed to a very short period of time, but I wanted to give you a, you know, 50,000-foot view of what's been going on on the ground. I could spend an hour talking about every one of those subjects because there's just been a tremendous amount of work that has gone on during that time in each one of those respective fields, but I can tell you that we are very much moving in the right direction. And like I mentioned, our goal is to make sure that we have our campus safe for our students going forward. I'm happy to take any questions or to feel free to ask me anything that you would like.
Any questions for Dr. Barzan on testing? Yes, Reeves?
Thank you so much for taking the time to speak and debrief us today. I guess I have one question. I don't know if you mentioned this, but you spoke on behalf of three testing locations for the spring semester. I was curious what those locations were, if they've been decided yet?
We're still working on, Reeves. That's a great question. Thanks for asking that. What we're trying to do is find and facilitate locations that are both, that are located across campus, that are accessible for multiple reasons. One, we want to find a good location to be able to be on bus lines so that students that need to access via bus can do so. Also, kind of spreading the testing locations around campus. We're in the final stages of finalizing those three locations, and so as soon as we get the final okay on that, I'd be happy to tell you about those. They are, right now, tentatively spaced out across campus so that we can have off-campus activity, be able to access it with parking, also more on central campus and then more on the south campus end too, so kind of interspersed between the three locations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Well, Amir, thanks so much. You've been incredible. You give us great confidence in knowing that we're going to have a robust testing program this coming spring. And so if you have a few more minutes and you can hang with us, that'd be great. Otherwise, you may have patients you're trying to get to, but thanks so much for being with us. And we're going to bring Chief David Perry up now to talk about off-campus enforcement of the community standards.
Good afternoon, Chancellor. Chair Stevens, trustee members, thank you for the opportunity, and I don't know how you carved out an hour for me to get through this, but we're going to talk it through together about our off-campus activity now, just a short time. Since the beginning of the pandemic, we have worked very closely with the Town of Chapel Hill Police Department and specifically Chief Blue. He's been a very good partner. Our off-campus activities are very important, and so we established joint patrols to help us respond to calls for service related to mass gatherings, loud music, underage drinking, and other violations, and some nuisance calls. The Chapel Hill Police Department is very positive and proactive as it relates to our students and their community initiatives, and they have a Good Neighbor initiative that really birthed this joint patrol initiative that we piggybacked off of. Works in partnership with our students who live in close proximity to other residents. And so we moved forward with off-campus reporting options for citizens with these joint patrols that we initiated on Thursdays through Sunday. We found that those are the days where our activity does pick up, gatherings, parties, and some type of celebratory events, usually coordinated with special events. The University Police Department has a number for contact. The Town of Chapel Hill has established a telephone number, and there's also ways to complete any concerning information via a form through the community standards website on Student Affairs, on the Student Affairs website. We also participate in a very important Monday morning call. So every Monday morning, we gather with community partners from the health department, from local law enforcement, from Student Affairs, and my office to discuss any outcomes from the weekend. We look for successful outcomes. We do have positive in-person outreach initiatives that come from those contacts. We do also have, unfortunately, some law enforcement contact because of some violations that had been reported to us. So just statistically speaking, some numbers, Charles Marshall likes numbers, we've had 139 logged complaints or incidents. 135 of those involved are UNC students. Nine total complaints resulted from those interactions with what's called an OCPAD referral. Instead of using the criminal code, we're using a pre-trial diversion process to address these behaviors. 60 in-person follow-up visits have taken place, and we find that to be very positive. Regarding the joint patrols and the jurisdiction, the partnership continues to flourish, and Chief Blue and I have opened a dialogue for expanding our jurisdiction, if possible, to areas that are contiguous or very close to our campus. Collectively, around our university, we continue to look at examples that are positive in nature, and one that has some extreme positive promise is a program at the University of Maryland where it's called the CMAST Project, the City Multi-Agency Services Team, and it's made up of, you know, usual partners that you would expect to be on a team, but it's proven statistically to be very, very successful. So I look forward to sharing that in more detail with you, Chancellor. I'll just stop there, as Dr. Cohen says, and take questions.
Questions for Chief Perry. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank you again. You, Chief, and your team have done an incredible job. I know this has been challenging, but I'm glad that there's a coordinated effort with the Town of Chapel Hill, and we'll continue to move forward. So thank you for being here. So as we wrap up, I just want to, you know, state that I remain cautiously optimistic that despite the uncertainty that's out there for the spring semester, that we will have a successful start and finish to that spring semester. We'll continue to move forward as we navigate some of this uncertainty, and I just want to say that I think that in many ways, we have shown that we can excel as a leading global public research university even during these challenging times, and that's our goal. None of this has been easy, but together, I believe that we can keep our community safe while fulfilling that mission by sort of reactivating more of the campus operations, and that is clearly our goal for the spring semester, similar to what we talked about back in September. But I believe in our public health and wellness experts, the commitment of our community getting us back on campus, and our willingness to learn from what we did this past semester and implement meaningful change. So I again appreciate all of your support and guidance as we move forward, and again want to thank Dr. Barzan and Chief Perry for being with us. Thank you.
Chancellor, thank you. Dr. and Chief, thank you as well. You all continue to impress us with what you're doing, and we look forward to a successful end of this semester and a highly successful spring semester. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Trustee Cochran for the Report of the Finance Infrastructure and Audit Committee.
Thank you, Chair Stevens. We had a very productive and efficient meeting this morning, even though we didn't finish on time. We were close. We were within seven minutes. And one of the things that should be obvious to those of you who are in the room or on the phone is that we have nine of the 13 members of the Board of Trustees on the Finance, Infrastructure, and Audit Committee. So there is no shortage of opinion. There is no shortage of conversation. I consider that to be a huge advantage, even though sometimes it slows things down. What we did today, which was a bit unusual, is to reshuffle the agenda to focus on three areas. Actually, the third area is a combination of David Ruth and John King, but the three areas, since most of the work we do is relatively routine, it's approving capital projects, it's talking about withdrawals from quasi-endowments, but most of the work we do is routine. This was not the case. We had a major discussion led by Nathan Knupman about tuition and fees, and I think most of you know that what we can do with tuition and fees is somewhat controlled, constrained by the Board of Governors. Nothing wrong with that, but it just doesn't give us the flexibility that sometimes we would want. At the end of the day, we've come up with, I think, a good compromise about tuition and fees. Nobody's ever satisfied because of the financial pressures that we face. We'd all like to be able to do more to increase revenues for the institution, but there are constraints. The second thing we wanted to do was to set a very clear pattern of discussion about doing business with contractors who are domiciled in North Carolina. We're a North Carolina institution. We get a lot of funds from the state. They are most generous, and we think it's our responsibility to plow back in... Oops. Got another emergency alert. Maybe I've gone too long already. We think it's our responsibility to do business with North Carolina firms if we can, if they're competitive, they're at the top of the list, and we made a decision this morning that is aimed at reinforcing that. And we're very proud of that decision. The third thing that we always do at the end of our committee meetings... The third thing that we always do at the end of our committee meetings is let the cleanup hitters clean up, and that was John King with UNC Management Company and David Ruth, who runs our development function. And let's just say, in very difficult times, both of those functions outperformed most of their competitors, most of their peer group, and gave us the kind of momentum going into this year that we need. We have two wonderful professional groups who do a great job. Great teams lead to great performance, and that's what we got from both John's team and David's team. And it's always a wonderful way to end a summary with that kind of performance from two very important units. Mr. Chair, that concludes my remarks.
Mr. Chairman, you have some motions to make? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry, I'm shuffling papers. We had an action for ratification of a withdrawal from a quasi-endowment for the Eschman School of Pharmacy. It was unanimously approved, and we we sent that motion to the full board.
Mr. Chairman, would you, again, consolidate your motion? I think all members of the board, both on the committee and not, heard the presentations this morning and were able to participate in the discussion if need be.
Yes.
Just consolidate your first four motions into one?
The withdrawal from the quasi-endowment from the Eschman School of Pharmacy is, I think, a $12 million withdrawal from a $25-plus million balance. We have a project authorization, the cost of which is about $720,000, and it will deal with autoclave replacement and one other thing in the School of Medicine. We, I'll put the construction manager at-risk selection into the same group, and that is we had
Hey, please don't, please don't put that one in the same group. If you could skip that one to the end. Thank you.
I'll skip that one. We had, for action, a tuition and fee proposal, which Nate explained in great detail, and we approved that. And then we also had John King walk us through an annual endowment report, which we accepted unanimously.
You've heard the motion from the chairman of the Finance Committee on the ratification of the withdrawal, on the project authorization at the med school, and the tuition fee proposals and the annual endowment report. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, Gene Davis.
Trustee Davis, second. Further discussion, if not, if you would, Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Ms. Artis Neal, yes. Mr. Bolick?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Koby?
Yes.
Mr. Cochran?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Duckett?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Meekins?
Yes.
Mr. Mosley?
Yes.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Now, Mr. Chair, Trustee Cochran, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Davis to take up your other items, since, as previously announced, Trustee Brown and I have a conflict or interference of conflict on that item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Cochran, for your motion.
After a very fruitful discussion today, and many discussions leading up to our formal meeting, we have decided to advance Barnhill Construction as the construction manager at-risk for the new addition and renovation at the Kenan Flagler Business School. That comes in the form of a motion from the committee.
And Chairman, Chair Cochran, was that a motion for the Barnhill team in first position, the Shellco in second position, and Choate, the Choate team in third position?
That is correct.
Very good. You've heard the motion made by the chair on behalf of the committee. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Bolick.
Seconded by Trustee Bolick. Is there any debate and discussion? Seeing no debate and discussion, we'll move into a vote. Madam Secretary, if you would, call the roll.
Ms. Artis Neal, yes. Mr. Bolick?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Recused.
Oh, excuse me. Mr. Koby?
Yes.
Mr. Cochran?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Duckett?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Meekins?
Yes.
Mr. Mosley?
Yes.
And Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
We have a seven, seven
By a vote, by a vote of seven zero with two recusals, the motion carries. I'll now turn it back over to Chair Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Was that the right vote?
Was it seven? I believe it would actually be by a vote of eleven with two, eleven zero with two extensions.
I stand corrected. That's correct.
Correct.
Thank you, Vice Chair Davis. Thank you, Chair Cochran, for your good report. I'm going to now call on Trustee Duckett for a report from the University Affairs Committee.
All right, I want to report that today, we heard from the Chair of the Faculty, Mimi Chapman, with her faculty update. Also, heard from the employee forum update, from Shana Hill, who's chair, and I think hers was a very important, not to say more important than another, but I think the staff here in the front line, people deserve to be applauded for all they've done through this difficult time. We also got a comprehensive update, which was solid, from the Graduate and Professional Student Federation, President Ryan Collins. It is fascinating to see how this affects the different areas of the campus and the university in this crazy year. And importantly, we also got an update on a new academic program. We see graduate academic program, the Masters in Applied Professional Studies, from Dr. Blaupluin, the provost, and I don't know if David Power is still on the call, but we'd love your help at the board level for Board of Governors. This is something that's very important to the state and to the university to push forward and hopefully do in January so that we can start this program at very minimal cost in the next full academic year.
I am still on and make sure, can you give me, like, just a one-page talking point sheet or half a page, just the highlights of it?
I will do that. You'll get it from me, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And then we went into closed session, and coming out of closed session in a form of a motion, we had one faculty and non-faculty EHR personnel item we'd bring from the closed session in the motion for approval from the full board.
Can we discuss that first in the closed session by the full board, Chair Duckett?
Yes, that's right. I apologize.
We won't take action at this point, but
So that would conclude my remarks.
Thank you so much. And let me now recognize Vice Chair Davis for the report of the External Relations Committee.
Thank you, Chair Stevens. The External Relations Committee met. We had a very informative presentation by Vice Chancellor Joel Curran. It was a communications update in which he showed us many of the stories that had been presented by him and his team and the responsiveness of those, the response to those, rather, in terms of the number of views, et cetera. His team continues to do an outstanding job, even in the midst of this, of this pandemic, of telling Carolina's story, and we're very grateful to him and his team. We then had a report from Vice Chancellor Clayton Summers for Public Affairs update from him and his team, in which he provided additional information to us about the results of this past election and about, began to establish some expectations for us as we move forward in our important communications with the Board of Governors and the General Assembly about sharing our story and continuing to work together with them to make our state better. We are appreciative to Vice Chancellor Summers and his team. We then went into closed session to consider two items. One was related to certain naming opportunities and the other related to the 2021 honorary degree. Those matters will be taken up in closed session. That ends my report, Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Davis. We're soon going to go into closed session, but before we do, I want to recognize Trustee Brown had a matter he wanted to bring before the board for consideration today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to put before the board a resolution, a little bit of quick background. For several years during the development of the blueprint for NEXT and also thereafter, the development of the Carolina NEXT strategic plan, the topic of possible responsible growth in the enrollment of undergraduate has been discussed. And in fact, the chancellor recently, during the installation, discussed this as an important topic and discussed it in terms of upcoming focus within the administration. So this motion simply seeks to have the Board of Trustees provide encouragement and policy direction to the chancellor, the administration, and other stakeholders on the topic of enrollment. With this in mind, I make the following motion, recognizing the importance of enrollment considerations to the Carolina's NEXT strategic plan and otherwise, the Board of Trustees strongly encourages the chancellor to make, to move ahead, to explore approaches and accompanying issues to responsibly increase undergraduate enrollment on a phased basis over a number of years. That's my motion. Entertained, second.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
And Cochran. Now, further discussion by members of the board. If not, I'll entertain a motion, the motion be, the motion be approved. It stated, if you would call the roll, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Artis Neal, yes. Mr. Bolick?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Koby?
Yes.
Mr. Cochran?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Duckett?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Meekins?
Yes.
Mr. Mosley?
Yes.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Trustee Brown. That was something you've been an advocate for for a long time, and, Chancellor, I know we reflect your remarks from your installation and I know your support for this issue as well. Thank you. We're not going to, ladies and gentlemen who are watching the meeting, we're not going to go into closed session of the board to take up items allowed by general statutes to be discussed in closed session. Can't predict the amount of time necessary. We never know. I do anticipate there might be one or two items coming out of executive, out of closed session for action. So if you're interested in continuing the meeting, the minutes will come back up when we go back into session. So I'd like to call on Secretary Artis Neal for a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes, Section 143-318.1, subsection A, subsection 1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged information under section 126-22, and also pursuant to subsections A2, subsection A3, A5, A6, A7, and A9.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Davis and Cochran. Further discussion on that motion, if not, if you would, call the roll.
Ms. Artis Neal, yes. Mr. Bolick?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Koby?
Yes.
Mr. Cochran?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Duckett?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Meekins?
Yes.
Mr. Mosley?
Yes.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes. Motion passes, and we are now going to go into closed session. The staff will need a few minutes to get set up and to make the appropriate adjustments. Okay, we are now back in open session. We do have one item coming out of closed session from the recommendation of the University Affairs Committee, Trustee Duckett.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Coming out of closed session for the full board and to the open session full board, we had one faculty and non-faculty EHR personnel item to bring forward from closed session as a motion for approval by the full board.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Davis, for the discussion debate. If not, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Artis Neal, yes. Mr. Bolick?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Koby?
Yes.
Mr. Cochran?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Duckett?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Meekins?
Yes.
Mr. Mosley?
Yes.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Any further business, they come before the board. If not, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Motion by Pryor.
No move.
Second by Cochran. Further debate, discussion, if not, please call the roll.
Ms. Artis Neal, yes. Mr. Bolick?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Koby?
Yes.
Mr. Cochran?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Duckett?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mosley?
Yes.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
And Mr. Stevens?
Yes. Motion passes, and we stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good job, Richard.